Cut off like that, it was just like, it was the oddest thing. You know, and I've normally been a mail the packet thing, right? But we're all trying to. And then I had ten pages that just said, I'm not gonna print. I'm just gonna give you that little. I'm like, nah, at that point, I got a certain amount of patience and then I'm like, no, 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 I think I got enough of what.
Scott, we're just about ready to go live. I'm live actually, and we're about ready to start. Good evening. The March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four Watcom County Planning Commission meeting is called to order. I'll call the roll. Don't be know if you're here. Kelvin Barton, you asked me, I'm here. Daniel Dogquist. Atul Deshmani.
Here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Jim Hansen.
Here.
Even Jackson. Even Jackson. Julie Jefferson. Julie Jefferson. Frank James.
He's here, he's.
Uh, thank you, sir. Dominic Messeri.
Here.
And Scott Van Dalen.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge.
I am the witness to the founding of the United States of America. And we do the republic, or what would stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, time for department update. Uh, Steve Robert, assistant planning director, would you give us the departmental?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Kelvin. So going to the council on their next meeting on the ninth of April will be the, the docket, the annual docket. And for those of you don't know, the docket is what really sets, um, a lot of what the planning commission does. That's all the things are gonna be, the council wants us to look at as far as comp plan amendments, code amendments. There are things that get added to that, as you, as you all know. Um, but that really sets kind of the, the schedule for the, for the, um, planning commission for this year. Um, so that'll be going in a couple of weeks here on the ninth of April. What we do know is coming to the planning commission. We're gonna be talking about the public participation plan. Um, hopefully that'll be the, one of the next things we talk about. We'll be talking about the land capacity methodology. This is a methodology used for determining how much land is available for additional housing and development in the future. We'll be talking about housing, employment, projections, and allocations. That's talking about where those allocations go to as far as cities or in the county, if they go to a UGA or outside UGA. And which UGA they go to. We'll be talking about, uh, we're coming back with some amendments to the capital improvement, uh, program. So there's some more amendments that have been proposed for that, so we'll be coming back to you with that. We'll be talking about the, bringing some code to you about the permit review process, uh, in timelines. There was some legislation from the last, uh, session that modified some of our requirements. And so we'll be having to make some changes to our code to comply with that before the start of the year. So we'll be going back to do some changes there. We'll be coming to you with some clean energy code. The Climate Impact Advisory Committee is currently working on some, some solar, solar amendments that will, uh, make their way to you after that, their recommendation is done. And we know also that we'll be coming to you looking at the, um, HII, the High Impact Industrial Zone. That's adjacent to, to Bellingham along the waterfront there. The council has already, um, let us know through resolution that they want us to take a look at, at that zone and the appropriate uses that would be in that zone. So th- those are the things we, and I'm probably forgetting something, but those are the things we already know about that are on the docket. And there's a few other items, but those are the ones that we hope to be looking at, at, at this year, along with a bunch of other comp plan stuff. A little bit about the department right now, we're going through some, we're hiring a few positions. As I think you know, we, uh, have our natural resource manager is on, he's been on now for a whole month. Um, we have a new NR staff who's been on with us now for about a month, a little more maybe. We're, um, in the process of, we're hiring a communications person. And then we're also hiring for, uh, a planner, uh, Priscilla, who was, who's gonna talk to us here in a few minutes, um, has, is leaving us. She was kind enough to come back and, um, do a cameo for the planning commission tonight. Uh, but she has left us and moved on to public work, so we'll be hiring to replace her in the future. And thank you, Priscilla. I know I've said it before, but thank you for, for coming tonight. That, that is my reporting, if there are questions.
Any questions for Steve? All right, thank you. So now is time for open session for public comment. Eileen is our planning commission coordinator, would you take over later?
Yes. Welcome to the meeting. Oh, Jim Hansen has a question first.
Hi, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Hansen.
Come on, you, you zip through that faster than I can figure out how to raise my hand.
Oh.
Sorry.
I know you're not, that you're not Eileen.
Couple of questions for staff. With the housing and employment allocation, are we talking about, uh, decisions that are being made by a multi-jurisdictional committee? That we have to just go along with, or do we have a say in these?
Yeah, of course we have a say. Um, one, a couple of, couple of kind of tenants behind the growth management act is, our plans, as well as the plans of those jurisdictions that are around us, they have to be, uh, consistent. Both internally consistent, so that means our plan needs to be consistent with itself. It also needs to be consistent with those plans around us. And so that will be a, a coordinated effort between us, but we certainly have, have the, the ability to, uh, uh, make big changes, have input, and when we'll be part of that, part of that conversation.
Second question about the high impact industrial zone. I'm wondering why this is being dealt with separately, separately from the comp plan update. And I tend to not favor piecemeal approach in these things.
Yeah, and, and we can talk more about that when we look at the, the specific, uh, language and how that was, uh, it's really asking us just to look at the uses in that zone. Um, the specific language from the, from the council on that. We debated whether to try to include that within the comp plan, and because of, because of the specificity of that, of that item, we thought it would be better to be handled as individual item and not as part of the comp.
Thank you.
Does that, does that, I mean, maybe I don't know what's the answer you wanted, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Eileen, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to let you know, Steven Jackson showed up.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So I wrote it. All right, uh, welcome to the meeting. This meeting is being broadcast live. The audio is being recorded and will be posted to the county website. As noted on our website, members of the public may watch the meeting or join online or by phone. During the open public comment session, speakers may not speak to items that are scheduled on the agenda for a public hearing tonight. If you would like to provide public comment at this time, we will take comments from those in the room first. Uh, please come up to the podium and print your full name on the sign sheet.
Okay, do it first, or I can show you how it's done.
I'll let you fill me, even though my name's already on the sheet.
You get three minutes.
Oh. I'm probably under volume, maybe.
Yes. So for tonight, I brought this zoom in of our area that we're concerned about. What we're looking at is Sunset Avenue. Like I was telling Steve, when, uh, when we sit around the kitchen table looking at this, we don't have an attorney. We've just got me, and I've, I've built more houses than you've driven by. I worked with Carl, I'm a building inspector, so when my daughter asks me, why is that not considered a spot zoning, or that, or this, I can't answer her. And I don't see, I honestly, I don't see a problem with it. I think spot zoning for one person is bad. But if you guys can figure out a way that when somebody has a specific question to make it work for the whole county, that's not spot zoning. I'm gonna visit with Mr. Claiborne over at Burn Dale, first part of the week for this, uh, population allocation, because we can throw a rock from the S across the street to this, but we can't build there any more than the two places we've already got. And that would be an ideal spot for infill building, uh, low income housing, duplex, you know, something so that people can work there. It's not quite on this map, but, uh, stage we do in that freeway overpass. And for whatever reason, Sunset has been closed right here, so you can't get down to Pacific Highway. And opening up that and doing a little bit of infill around the area there seems to me like a smart move, and it would apply anywhere else. If your, if your grandpa can throw a rock and hit a, uh, urban growth area, I think that it makes sense to figure out some way in the code or the conversation to have an exemption for that. Right now, the way it works is, uh, when I ask about doing this, it's mailed out to everybody within three hundred yards or feet or whatever, and we have an input and gets all back, but the staff at the end of the counter back there says, if we're against it, we're not gonna give it a thumbs up. So they said, this is the route to go, is to visit with you guys as much as possible and get together with Mr. Claiborne thirty seconds. So I'm probably not gonna make the whole meeting tonight. I just got done with my bookstore out, and as luck would have it, I finished on Sunset. So I said I could do it was, cause I'm, I had about five minutes to spare to get here, so hopefully this process pays off, you guys will give me some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
Yes.
You've said previously, you hold that map back up, that you think it would be smarter to not have the, the boundary lines run along the road, but along the backside of the property that fronts the road.
Anywhere.
So you would envision that line going, I don't know how deep those properties are, but.
They go back, uh, they go back quite a ways, it's a five acre parcel, it goes back to Silver Creek. I think this backs up on it as well, but, um, there's more than one spot like that. Along, uh, along northwest, all of this stuff is zoned one way, across the street, it's not.
Yeah, and if you look at that map, I, it seems like a lot of the boundaries are just drawn along.
Roads.
Roadways.
Yeah, and if, if the language was something that, you know, a blurry area right there, or something, some way to codify it, or codify it, whichever way you say it, so that your neighbor across the street doesn't get a whole bunch of stuff. In our particular case, right across the street, there's eight one acre lots that were not taken into consideration when that was done. So our, our five is not accurate with people that are right over there, kind of deal. So I appreciate your question. Uh, can you hold this for a moment, Commissioner Hansen?
Yeah, my question is, when you bought that property, was the value, do you believe that the value was lowered of what you had to pay by the fact that it was, uh, not someplace, not in that other zoning?
No, uh, and it's, it's my daughter-in-law's property, and they bought it as is, and what they're trying to do is improve it. So currently, that's how they accepted it. They did, uh, the zoning didn't change after they bought it. It was done a long time ago, apparently. Okay, thank you. Be back. I wanna take off, guys. Okay, see you next meeting. Good luck.
Well, I'm Lynn Moser, my name's already on there. I don't, don't even know why I'm here, except I'm trying to raise some consciousness, I guess, and I don't know talking to the room full of people with masks on is even worth my breath. Actually, scared of maybe being looking at people that are wearing that. Cause I have no idea why you are. Are you aware of the, uh, I'll just read the heading of this article, mail letting it happen. Exposing DNC plan to rig the twenty twenty four election. Former Washington State Democrat operative blows the whistle on the Democrat. I just wanna know if anyone saw this article. You may not look at the Gateway Pundit. It's a long article, it's minus the ads. Skip over here to page fourteen, where it starts to talk about Watcom County, Washington State specifically. Do you know who Cody Hart is? Do you know that our election official was replaced? And be deposed and then replaced. I think we would, as public, would like to know that, okay? So here are the charts and the counts and the how many registered voters and how many votes and so forth. And I don't need to take your time, so I'm just, I'm looking at a lot of cases that don't know, know and/or believe that we had an issue, have an issue with our twenty twenty election going to have twenty twenty two, and probably gonna have it with twenty twenty four. So I would hope that you people, because you have a job and you represent us, and hopefully we voted for you and you weren't selected, that you might be interested in that we have honest voting in Watcom County. I've lived here almost all my life, seven, five years, and we have not had honest voting in Watcom County. I know we operate under ITLE here. I've gone in and tried to get, I'm not trying to get a question about getting a permit, a little, a little building permit for a little humble shit. And the poor, the poor young man at the counter, I guess I was so intimidated, he had to get help to come and answer my question. See, I can't even tell if you're smiling or not smiling, the maps are really, really, really concerning.
We're listening.
So he came up and I said, uh, I asked about it, and to shorten the conversation, he says, I, I said, you know, I'm trying to be nice enough getting into this, but you know, what you're telling me is strictly out of Agenda Twenty One. He says, I don't know anything about any old quote unquote, any old Agenda Twenty One. I'm just going by international regulations. And I get smiled, because that is Agenda Twenty One, and we are operating under ITLE and have been for, God, only those twenty, twenty-five years. Because when I used to question it, when Doug Erickson was around, I got laughed at. So now, now we're programmed by now. So I'm wondering if you'd like to educate the public, that was time, about that. Or if you wanna operate by the Smith-Mundt Act. The other gentleman had a few more minutes, I may not. But anyway, and maybe you know what the Smith-Mundt Act is, and why it's, why you can go by honesty, or just ignore it and forget I was here and run up some of the issues, but, you know, what's happening nationally is gonna run downhill, and we're downhill, just like every other little community.
I, I did tend to rough us.
So I, I.
And thanks for coming.
But if you'd like to look at it and you'd like to have this and see where we fall, because we definitely had fraud in our election in Watcom County.
Can you leave that here?
Yeah, I'm saying, I, I believe it. I don't have, I'm old school, I don't do cell, cellphone, so I couldn't just bring it and show you, so I just brought your hard copy.
Okay, good, yeah, that's good.
I hope you guys had consciousness of that.
Okay, so time now for commissioner comments, any commissioner comments?
Did you give it to the forty-five communist schools too? Thank you.
Any commissioner comment? Okay, let's move on to approval of minutes for February twenty third. Oh, there we go, our commissioner Hansen, go ahead.
Yes, fluids, fluids run downhill, but feces float.
Okay. Commissioner James, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move approval of minutes for last meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, uh, a motion to approve the minutes in a second. Is there any corrections discussion? And seeing that there is no corrections or discussion, Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Deshmani. Deshmani. Jackson.
Yes.
Hansen.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Messeri.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Dogquist.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Pass.
Here, yes, by the way, sorry. I was, I was in transit.
Thank you, Commissioner Deshmani. Okay. So the meeting topic for tonight is public hearing and work session on open space application. And I'm not going to read the number, but we have it all here in our papers. And, um, I believe Priscilla is going to help with it.
Priscilla's doing a presentation on this.
All right, Priscilla, we're ready for you.
Perfect, can everyone see my screen here?
We can, yes.
Awesome. Oh, good evening commissioners, um, Priscilla Drury, former open space program administrator. I'm going to, uh, discuss Watcom County's twenty twenty-three open space applications with you tonight. Um, it will be a brief one, so let's go ahead and get started if I can get my mouse to work here. Technical difficulties, sorry. Okay, here we go. So a quick background, uh, on the Open Space Taxation Act. In nineteen seventy, the state enacted the Open Space Taxation Act, and this was due to growing concern over the conversion of open space lands. Um, and it was believed to be in the best interests of the state to maintain and preserve open spaces for resource production and public enjoyment. Uh, open space land is a voluntary program, providing tax breaks to property owners by valuing lands based on current use value, rather than highest and best use as an incentive to preserve open space. And these are the land classifications of the current use property tax reduction programs. The first two on the list here, farm and agricultural land and designated forest land, um, are administered by the assessor's office, and the next two here, the red and the teal, uh, are the open space land classifications that are administered by PDS. Uh, farm and agricultural conservation land is a subsection of the open space land classification. And so just general process, uh, PDS staff receives applications for open space classification, and these are then evaluated in accordance, um, with the adopted public benefit rating system. Um, and from there, staff recommendation for approval is then, um, presented to you, planning commission. Um, and then planning commission, you will then make recommendation, um, that PDS staff will take to county council, uh, to approve or deny those individual applications. Uh, from county council, they will approve or deny these individual applications. And if those applications are approved, then they'll be passed on to the county assessor. And upon completion of an open space tax agreement, um, the county assessor will make the necessary adjustments and notify the owner of that new value. So the Watcom County Open Space Policy and Public Benefit Rating System, um, the PBRS is a qualitative, not quantitative tool. Uh, the potential points are awarded relative to the benefit provided to the public. Um, points based on the evaluation of land are entered into a formula which generates a PBR score with a minimum of forty-five required for staff recommendation, um, of approval. And if an application is approved, the public benefit rating system is then used by the assessor to arrive at a new current use per acre value. Um, public access is a condition of approval for the open space program. However, uh, council may waive this requirement if the purpose of this classification is for conservation of wetlands and critical areas, historic sites, or known documented habitat of endangered species. And so today, there is only one application, uh, to present from twenty twenty-three, um, that went through the entire process of evaluation, um, and that is for the Haynes property. And here is a map, and this little teeny twenty acre parcel here, um, is the one that I will be discussing today. So Chester and Sochiko Haynes submitted an application containing nineteen point four acres to reclassify as open space farm and agricultural conservation land from open space farm and agriculture. Um, they received a PBR of forty-one point four, and because it's lower than the forty-five, um, PDS cannot recommend approval. Um, here is an aerial map of the Haynes property. Uh, this parcel is located in the Drayton Harbor watershed, just east of, uh, Valley View Road, and approximately three and a half miles north northwest of the city of Ferndale. And here we have the Haynes property, uh, comprehensive plan zoning map. And just to show that this property here is located in an R five A designation.
Priscilla, can you hold here just a minute while we have the map?
Absolutely.
What is the access to that road? And the previous slide probably shows it better, but where is the access to that property?
Yeah, so right along here, Valley View Road, um, you would make the right here, and this is a private road. Um, and this does pass by a couple of different properties before entering here at this, this, um, sorry, at this left corner of, uh, apologies, I had to get the lights back on, um, of the, the parcel line here.
Okay, and so a question I have, and, and I, I know you've got some little. Okay, and so the question I have, and I, I know you've got some little titles on there, so I'm not quite certain. And, and of course, there's some forest area. Is it possible for someone to walk down that road and get to this property without going across someone else's property, other than the private road?
Yes, it is. It's, um, this access road right here takes you directly to there. And so, um, you don't have to cut across anyone's, anyone's property. It kind of runs along all of the parcel, uh, lines of those properties.
All right, thank you. I, I wasn't sure of that. And I, when I read, um, about their, um, public access, you know, for, for the public, if this were to go through, if it were possible for someone to say walk there.
Yeah. Absolutely. And, and that's a good point, too. Um, as part of their, um, PBR, PBR score, um, they did not receive points for the potential of it, um, being on a public access road. And so because it is a private access road, they didn't receive some points, which would otherwise have boosted their, um, their score.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then we'll go here to this, this lastly, um, we have the ecosystem map for the Haynes property. Um, this property does have the presence of superficial aquifers and is an aquifer recharge zone of high susceptibility. Um, wetlands are present, uh, as is a designated conservation area or a state priority habitat, which is here, kind of bordering on the two parcels there. Um, and just for background, habitat conservation areas, uh, are those areas that are identified as being of critical importance uh, to the maintenance of certain fish, wildlife, and/or plant species. In this case, I believe it was plant species, um, just from the inventory that I, I checked. Uh, and these areas are typically identified either by known point locations or specific species, um, or habitat areas or both. And so, uh, all areas within the county meeting these criteria are designated critical area. And so that's that spot there, and just the modeled, sorry, the modeled wetlands here. Um, and just showing that this is a superficial aquifer area, um, and a layer that I can't put on there, but the high susceptibility. So, um, that is all for the Haynes property. Um, and that is the only application that I have to present to you tonight. So are there any questions?
Commissioner Moserri.
So if they don't get reclassified, will they fall out of their current designation or?
Yes, so if they, so they are, um, they are being removed from the open space, open space farm and agricultural classification as of current. So they applied to reclassify for open space farm and agricultural conservation land. Um, if they are not approved, then they will owe, um, back taxes for the last seven years because they no longer meet the income requirement, uh, as, as designated for, um, remaining in compliance with the open space farm and agricultural, uh, classification that's administered by the assessor's office.
Commissioner Hansen.
Thank you for the great explanation. Uh, if they get open space and then of, in a few years' hands, decide to reclassify it and go ahead and develop into five acre lots, what kind of tax penalty will they have for that?
Yeah, good question. They would still, in order to be removed from any open space classification, compensating taxes would be due. So they would still owe the back taxes for the last seven years. Um, it's just a matter of that wouldn't be required right now, simply because they don't meet that income requirement for the assessor run program. Um, through the PDS administered program, well, as directed by council. Um, they, they would not owe those back taxes, but under the, under the open space land classification as administered by PDS, the subclassification open space farm and agricultural conservation land is eligible to be reclassified later on as open space farm and agricultural land, so long as they meet that income requirement again. If they were just classifying into open space and they, they wouldn't be able to reclassify into anything, they would only have to drop the classification entirely and pay those back taxes. So with the classification that they're applying for, there's also the opportunity for them to reclassify back into farm and agricultural land, which would be using that land for, for resources.
So what would, what's, how much difference is there between what they would be paying, what they would have paid for the last seven years and the next, how many ever years, under these open space, both either of these classifications, the difference between that and what they would have paid and under the five acre? What I'm trying to figure out is, is this going to be enough penalty? If I want to propose we go ahead and, and award this, is it going to be significant penalty if they later decide to develop the property?
Yeah, so it's, I would say it's a very, it's a very loose estimate, but as, as the sort of, I'd say, current standard for that is, it's approximately $1,000 per acre that they would owe in back taxes. And so I don't know that that would change much, if anything, it would increase later on down the line. Um, but they would still have to pay those back taxes for the full 20 acres to be able, because they're submitting the full 19.4 acres into classification in order to even, they, they can't just choose to remove only five acres. They would have to remove the full 20. Therefore, they would have to pay the compensating tax on the full 19.4 acres.
Is that, is that $1,000 per acre per year or $1,000 per acre flat?
$1,000 per acre flat. So, uh, also with this classification, or with the reclassification change, their property taxes will be going up for them. Um, open space farm and agriculture as administered by the assessor's office is pretty much one of the largest tax breaks or, uh, tax reductions that you can get in the program, along with designated forest land. So them reclassifying into open space farm and agricultural conservation land would be, um, a shift in their taxes going up.
So, um, Priscilla, I have a question for you. So you mentioned earlier about it being a private road and that, that changes the score. How would this have scored out if that were a public road?
Yeah. Um, rough, it would have roughly changed it about a full point. Um, just because the way that, um, the way that public access is scored, it's out of a 40% potential. And so each of those categories, there are five, uh, five, yeah, that's correct. Um, there are five potential, you know, marks that they could receive to give them the full 40%, but, um, public access road is a whole 8% of that point value. And so they received an 8% um, reduction in that, but also, um, in the whole of it, the way that it's averaged, so that everything's kind of scored evenly, then I'd say it, it, it would be about a full point.
Thank you. Commissioner Deschmann.
Uh, so I'd like to explore the issue of, uh, the water footprint, uh, that impacts when you, uh, switch to an open space designation. And what I'm curious about is what does, what does this do to a designation of the space as far as the water rights, uh, associated with the property? Uh, what are the existing water, do we look at what are the existing water rights, what the difference is? Because obviously, these days, I think a lot about adjudication. And I'm wondering about, um, could open space designation be a way to promote water, you, uh, water use, conservation, water, less water use?
Yeah, I, I guess I, if I'm understanding your question correctly, um, I guess answering to the best of my ability with that would just be because this 19 point, for this particular example, because this 19.4 acres is not actually, um, developed on, it's a full 19.4 acres going into that open space. So there would not be, um, you know, any water use, uh, associated with development or, um, residence on that 19.4 acres. I don't believe, when I looked through all of the deeds and stuff, that I saw water rights, um, because that is something that we do look at for open space farm and, um, agricultural conservation land, is that, um, when looking at the farmland available on this property, whether it's prime farmland or, um, you know, farmland of statewide importance, there are these little sort of indicator factors as well that state if drained or if irrigated. And they do sit on property that was prime farmland if irrigated. And so when looking into that, for this one in particular, um, I did not see any, you know, water rights for the actual irrigation of this land. But, um, I don't really know if I can answer that question far beyond that, other than I know that this, it being put into that classification does reduce the demand of water for that 19.4 acres.
So if I can follow up here.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, so I, uh, what I'm imagining that the short plating or the otherwise development of this land for, uh, multiple housing units would automatically trigger, um, private wells with 500 gallons, uh, per day under the new ecology rule of, of water. And depending on how many houses are permit, permitted, that plus, um, the ancillary garden and stock water allowances could be, would be the associated water impacts of development. So. Just to share.
Commissioner Deschmann. I'm sorry, Commissioner, but there.
Okay, you're confusing me. Um, so they're, uh, they're agreeing to provide public access, though, on the property?
Yes, they are.
So has there ever been any conflicts in the past where, where neighbors that, you know, since this is a private road and not just their personal driveway or off of a public road? Have we seen conflicts with that with neighbors and anything like that in the past?
Yeah, so when I did go out and, um, did my site visit, the road, I don't know about the history they've had with the neighbors, other than I know that they have been, um, for the past year and a half, they have been, um, in, in, um, a, a case situation where they had a squatter on their property that they were trying to get off. And so there's been a lot of, you know, maybe some heightened awareness by the neighbors as far as I was told by the, the applicants, um, to just be sure that, you know, no one's trying to move in again on the property because they did a lot of damage in terms of litter, um, which is almost all cleaned up now. Um, but I don't know, um, that they've had any real, uh, you know, complications with those neighbors other than, um, with the site visit that I did. It was a pretty easy, uh, access, and I did go out with one other person. Um, and we were probably on the property for about an hour, hour and a half, just walking around the perimeter. And, um, we didn't really, you know, it, it's, it's not next to any neighbors that you're walking past their homes or anything. So it's kind of a really big area, um, that I'm not sure there would be much concern. But I also understand the concern of it being on a public road, which is partly why they don't get points for that, because accessibility could be a little more challenging if confronted with a neighbor that doesn't want them there.
And go ahead and continue.
Yeah, and there's two other things that I would just consider, um, when it comes to private roads. Um, sometimes there's maintenance agreements, and now this, this property is now increasing potentially the use of that. Um, so they're having a higher impact on it. And also, sometimes these shared driveways are sized based on the amount of vehicles that are going to be, gonna be on them. And now is that an appropriate size, especially considering fire or that kind of thing? I don't know, just something that comes to mind that I haven't really thought of when we've been looking at these open spaces.
Yeah, I'd say that's, those are good points to be made with this site in specific. Um, for parking, there is tons, so it's not going to be, for this specific property, I don't see it being an issue either of, you know, cars being parked next to or near driveways of other households. Um, uh, the way that you drive into this property, there's a really big clearing that is in their property line. Um, kind of at, I'll show you here real quick. Um, at this section right here, this whole part is, is, you know, parking capable. But I definitely understand, you know, coming through here, you are passing a residence here and a residence here, and there's one tucked right here, but, um, which I think is currently being built. Um, but otherwise, there were not many other, you know, residences that, that you cross by.
Commissioner James.
Um, this was 41.4 points, right?
Yes.
And typically, it's 45 is the line?
Yes.
So if they got the points for public access, would that qualify them?
Uh, it would not qualify them entirely. Um, it would only give them about a point extra boost. Um, the one thing that they were really lacking, um, in terms of points is just the geographic features, um, in terms of they don't live in a high soil erosion area, or this property isn't in a high soil erosion area. There are no slopes in the area, which doesn't, um, you get points, uh, for, you know, if development would impede the, the function of this environment. Um, and so really, it has more to do with water quality, contamination, and ability to, um, you know, absorb that water because of all of the wetlands that are present on the property. Um, but there are those other limiting factors, which again are just soil erosion, slope. Um, and no, um, not a fish bearing stream.
I'd just like to say that I think this property seems not to qualify, plain and simple, in a pretty direct way. And I don't know why we're, we would make an exception for that, particularly when it would impact three other private property owners. Um, um, why do we have the right to authorize the impacts on these three other neighbors? It seems like a very, I think it's a straightforward case this, in this particular one.
Priscilla, um, and, uh, Commissioner James, uh, made what, uh, seems to be a valid point. And would you, um, explain to everyone, because we haven't had these for a while, what the intent of why these come to the planning commission and, and the process?
Yeah, so, um, it comes to the planning commission and the process for, uh, making its way to county council. So essentially, um, when looking at the process here, um, PDS is only responsible for the part of the evaluation. Um, so we, we do the work of processing and saying, hey, here's this evaluation. And we bring it here to you, planning commission, so that you are actually the ones who are making recommendation to county council. It's not PDS staff. We are acting on your behalf to go to county council. We are acting on your behalf to go to county council to make this recommendation. And this is all written, um, I think it was back in, in nineteen ninety-five, the Wacom County, um, Public Benefit Rating System, the way that that is written in that process. And that's just kind of the process that has been followed since no changes have been made once the adoption of the Public Benefit Rating System has happened. So in, we are one of, um, we are one of a handful of counties that has adopted our own public benefit rating system. Not all counties have adopted that. And so, um, by guidance of that public benefit rating system is kind of how we got to this process of, we do the work to make the evaluation, bring it to you, and then you are the one that is actually making recommendation to county council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Uh, go ahead, Commissioner James.
I was gonna say, if it's appropriate, I would move at this point that we, uh, recommend against this approval to council.
Commissioner Desmonte.
I can wait if there's going to be a second first.
I have a second.
Second by, um, Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
And then, um, uh, Commissioner Desmonte, go ahead.
I'd like to dig a little bit deeper into the neighbor impacts. Uh, how much of a conversation has, uh, P D S had with the neighbors on, uh, on the impacts of their properties?
Um, we do not contact the neighbors for any of the, um, evaluation process. It is, it's solely on the part of, um, sorry, I'm trying to fix my screen here. Solely on the part of the applicant to provide that information.
We have a motion on the floor to deny recommending this. We recommend that it be denied. And I'm sorry, if I, if I didn't get it straight, Commissioner James, please correct me.
Oh, that's correct. Recommend to the council or deny, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Desmonte, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't lower my hand.
Okay, all right. Uh, do we have any more comments, uh, discussion on the, uh, on the motion? Commissioner Hanson.
Now, my only thought is, only red, has reservation and not approving this is thinking about the impact if they put four houses on this property. Because if, if we turn them down, it might be likely they put four houses on the property, sell them for that, and thereby there'll be greater impacts on the land, greater impacts on the roads, et cetera. So, and also there'll be impact on the neighbors to have more neighbors. So that, those factors would tend to make me want to support this, but I don't feel strongly about it in any way.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Are there any more comments on the motion? Hey, Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
I have, I have.
I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Moser.
Just to be clear, if we vote yes on the motion, we're voting to not recommend the approval.
Correct.
Is that right?
That's how I understand.
Yes.
Just, is Commissioner Dogquist going to stand up and put a hand in the mouse?
Okay, thank you. We were seeing a white hand on the screen for those of you that are, are, uh, well, maybe you were seeing it also, but it wasn't the yellow hand raised. Right, Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Hanson.
No.
Jackson.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Moser.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Dogquist.
Yes.
Deschmann.
Epstein.
Barton.
Yeah.
Passes.
That passed. So that is our, um, agenda for the night, if with the exception of unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business or other business? Anything that we have no hands up here?
So maybe I, I just wanted, for your next meeting, we will likely, PPP defining, uh, public, sorry, sorry, sorry to get out. Public participation plan will likely not be ready for the next meeting. So we're likely going to cancel your next one, and then we'll hold, hold the following questions then.
Okay.
Just want to give you a heads up.
That come across, it will likely cancel the next meeting and then hold the next one. It was a little soft, we'll interrupt the microphone. All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Priscilla. Good luck.
Here you go, Kelvin.